I call the meeting of the Londonderry Town Council for February fourteenth, two thousand and eleven to order. Please rise and join me in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilor Farrell, would you please...
Aye, Pledge of Allegiance. To flag the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for our men and women serving us both here and abroad. Thank you, you may be seated. And Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. Thank you for coming. I thought the Budget Committee was supposed to bring...
There is no money.
Okay. Our first order of business is public comment, and we have Londonderry Trailways here, so I'd like to invite you... And hopefully a presentation. Would you like me to see if anyone in the public... Before... yeah. Does anyone else in the public have something they'd like to say in public comment? Oh, well.
I'll waste some time.
Okay.
Waste some time? It's Valentine's Day, there's no wasting of time.
And you wore red, too.
Make Seymour Town Clerk Tax Collector. Just a reminder about elections, we'll talk about elections real quickly. Registration has now begun again, starting today through the... on next Friday. So the next two weeks, they can register to vote at the Town Clerk's office. After that, they'll need to register at the polls. Broer certificate or passport to show that you're a U.S. citizen, and something with your Londonderry address. Elections will be held on Tuesday, March eighth, that's the beginning of town meeting, and that's by ballot, which will be voting for charter change, bond, and all officers. On the Saturday meeting, which will be September, oh my goodness, March twelfth, that will begin at nine o'clock in the morning, and that will be held at the high school cafeteria, and that's the continuation for all warrant articles. Polls on Tuesday will be open from seven in the morning until eight o'clock in the evening. Any questions, call the Clerk's office, and we'll be glad to help them.
Should we ask for the horse lady?
No. Any questions?
No.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I tried.
We could jump ahead to new business.
Yes, we could.
While you try to get that to work. So we will do that. So we'll go ahead and go to new business, adoption of assault reduction plan, and DPW Director. Janice Soski.
I can't believe Valentine's Day, and he didn't bring us candy. I am shocked.
Where's my money?
Oh, listen, you're out for a million, so, you know, we did back you.
I thought it was like a third on agenda. What happened to Chief?
No, you... We removed something.
Are you saying you're out of lust for words?
No. I figured if you wanted to go for Valentine's dinner, I'll run this quick. I...
It's lit now.
Probably, maybe it'll be faster if I just read the stuff that you know. I think all of you have the salt reduction plan in the package. And during the Salem-Merchester I-93 environmental study for I-93 widening project, elevated chloride level where identified number of streams. Beaver Brook was one of the brooks that has been listed as impaired.
Good.
Continue.
Yeah.
As impaired by New Hampshire DAS and EPA for chloride concentration that exceed state water quality standards. In accordance with the Clean Water Act, the New Hampshire DAS was required to conduct the total maximum daily loads study to qualify the chloride reductions needed to meet the state water quality standards. In order to meet the water quality standards, significant reductions from the current chloride loadings are required. Chlorides to the important watersheds are from several sources. It's from roadway and parking lot deicing, from the food waste, from water softness, atmospheric deposition, and salt piles runoff. The Town of Londonderry already agreed to work towards the reduction of the amount of salt applied during the snow and ice removal operations, while maintaining our... and this is important, while maintaining our town's roadway system in accordance with our winter maintenance policy. In two thousand and eight, Town of Londonderry signed a resolution to that effect, as some of you probably were here when I stated the presentation. Earmark funds were appropriated through Federal Highway Administration to develop implemented those TMDLs with total maximum daily loadings. These funds are also available to assist the communities within the impaired watershed, Salem, Winham, Derry, London Dairy, and Chester, to reduce the road salt use. The salt reduction work group was formulated, and this work group was all the public works director, EPA, state, and to develop the appropriate and workable guidelines to implement the reductions. The salt reduction plan in front of you that you have in the package is the result of this work conducted by our department in conjunctions with that group. Once the salt reduction plan was developed, a steering committee made up of representative from New Hampshire DOT, EPA, New Hampshire DAS, and the Federal Highway Administration evaluated our plan and approved this plan. And it was important, because without their approval, we will not be eligible for earmark funds, and we have to provide only twenty percent when we want to get those plans. So our funds are twenty percent match. The funding assistance to community will be administered through the separate municipal agreement with New Hampshire DOT. This is an agreement how the money would be reimbursed and dispersed. The salt reduction plan is meant to be a dynamic to allow us to evaluate and face in any changes in approaches in the winter maintenance activities in a fiscal and sound manner. Londonderry is responsible for approximately forty miles of roads within the watershed and two parking lots. Mechanical upgrades, new practices, outreach, and awareness activities contained with this plan are intended to reduce the amount of salt applied that's working towards decreasing chloride loadings. And what I put in that plan were two things. Different towns put it different, but majority of them, they were trying to go after the equipment. I put it there, they will purchase the six-wheel dump truck, similar to the one that we are purchasing, with the body spreader combination, when the spreader is underneath. And what additional requirements was that we will have to have pre-wetting sprayer at the spreader that will pre-wet the salt, helping to, you know, reduce the salt usage. Also, we will have to equip the truck with a ground speed control and a temperature sensor that will be able to read. With all this equipment, we believe they will be able to reduce the salt usage. Now, we will be using this truck on one of the routes only. We have four routes within the watershed, so we'll be using only in one plow route. And we'll be obviously monitoring and checking if we accomplish any savings. So this is the money that is dedicated for the pilot program to see if this can work. I believe that we will be able to achieve those reductions. The next requirement was that we'll have to have a public outreach and a private outreach. One of the things is that in this plan, they will require that our town staff and private contractors hired by the town will attend the salt reduction training. And also, we will engage in a public outreach to the contractors, to the local businesses. I think many of us drove and saw on a pretty nice clear day where parking lots were like a popcorn with the salt, because again, private contractors will spread the salt, trying to basically melt the snow, not to just prevent from adhering to the surface. And Londonderry will strongly support the HB, the House bill, that right now went out of committee, but it is to, you know, to require certification from private, you know, contractors to use the salt. Because thirty percent, thirty-seven percent is from... in the watershed is from the municipal roads. When you look at this substantial amount, almost the same percentage is from private parking lots, that the salt usage and the chlorides are going to the watershed. Also, we will be upgrading our meteorological service that we are using right now in the garage to obtain the weather forecasts, and so the money is dedicated in the plan also for that. And Londonderry is committed to, you know, to this multi-year program for the salt reduction, to eventually meeting those TMDLs. And the town intends to, you know, continually take advantage of the I-93 salt reduction program that those earmark funds were like two and a half million dollars stayed already, took a chunk, you know, for doing the TMDL study. But so this first chunk is for the first year. If this works, next year I will ask for another, I'll be asking probably for the same thing if the truck works, and this will definitely help us. So for us, it's kind of win-win situation, because in our capital reserve funds from our budget, if you can see at the table, altogether, the cost for the program is approximately one hundred and forty thousand dollars, and our share is twenty-three thousand dollars. So the rest will be, you know, funded by these earmark funds. So we already skipped one year of not buying equipment. This is the opportunity to recover that, you know, by buying, by getting that funds from the state. And again, this will implement this for this next coming season, so sometimes in summertime, we'll be buying the equipment. So one of the requirements was to get the approval by the steering committee. They approve our plan, and now I have to have a proof plan by the town council, and after that, it'll be just agreement when we'll be withdrawing the money. And I hope that town council will agree with this plan and support us.
Thank you, Janice. Questions? Sean?
Janos, so how are they going to establish the savings over the time of this implementation?
We keep track of every load that is going out of the garage. We know exactly every load that is coming when we are loading the trucks. So when we have reports after each storm, we know how many tons we use, how many tons of sand and mix and everything else. So by based on this data, we'll be able to determine and compare to the trucks with the regular spreader and without the equipment to see the reductions.
So is this... so this machine, this truck that you're going to look to get, it spreads brine?
No. That truck, it's the same truck as we have right now. We... right now, we're upgrading the old trucks, which were additional spreader put in the body, and it was the end spreader. Now, when we are specifying the trucks, the trucks that you don't see the spreader in the back, because spreader is underneath. So it's a big dump body with a conveyor underneath, and that spreads, and it helps us, you know, because again, spreads right underneath our wheels.
Is that the truck that you showed me last summer?
I think so, yes.
Yeah.
So that's the new equipment that we are purchasing. But with addition, that we have to add this to this truck, we have to add that there will be small tanks on the side, and those tanks, and there will be a sprayer that will spray into the spreader. So when the salt will be spread, will be spread together with already pre-wetted, and the brine that we'll purchase is from the state. So it's not like the state doing that with a big tank spraying, and just spraying only blind brine. We were spraying also salt, but the salt would be wetted. And the study showed that if you pre-wet or you already activated salt, it doesn't bounce off as much from the road, sticks to the road, and that helps, you know, to reduce the salt usage.
So one other question tying into what you just said is, can we expect that you're going to have a lot more turnover in equipment as far as stuff getting rusted out? Because obviously, by wetting the salt, you're going to be activating the chemical in it, which is going to obviously not too well for the steel.
There is no... right now, Rust is convinced that, you know, yes, the equipment will be rusting faster, any pre-wetting, any calcium chloride, anything that you had to it, it is, you know, it is deteriorating equipment faster. Will it survive as long as we need, you know, to meet our capital reserve plan and just equipment? We hope so. But right now, again, we... out of one hundred and forty thousand dollars, it costs us twenty-three thousand dollars to try this. We might not... we will not have a choice, because the waters are impaired. EPA is going to require that we have to meet these TMDLs. We cannot impair the waters anymore. So right now, they are helping the communities by... and helping state and communities by having that earmark money. The problem would be what I see with private applicators and enforcing them to reduce the salt, and also how the town will deal in this watershed with the future development. Because that would be probably the one thing that we already know, discussing that future development in that watershed will somehow will have to deal with the salt.
So on a quick question, just to finish up. If... what would it be... would it be possible, instead of using the chloride near the watershed, what about switching over to just the sand?
You would... if you do not spray, if you do not apply salt, that the pavement, you will develop the surface that sticks to the pavement, and building up, you will end up with maybe a crust of, you know, trenches of ice underneath, that you will require the graders to take it off. Because salt is just to prevent that adherence of the snow to the pavement, so we can plow it off. It's not to melt. So if you don't use it, you will have icy road till or snowy road till spring. So I don't think with today's expectations of people wanting a black pavement in this area, I don't think it would work. I... we will have to use the salt.
They use to roll the salt.
We... the snow, yeah.
The snow.
And I think, you know, up north, the people don't have a problem to drive on the snow. Somehow, we want to survive here on all-season tires, which I think we should not do. It is a bad direction that we went. We should all switch to snow tires and put started on them, too, and we will, you know, we would not have to use this much salt. But I'm convinced that we will find out, this just happened because of I-93 widening, the study was conducted, but those waters are probably impaired in many other areas, and this will become the routine with these plans for different towns and different areas.
Thank you.
Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Janos, as you know, there are several state roads that crisscross the community. What is the intersection upon a tenor? What is the... what is the... the work that we do with the state in terms of state responsibility versus the town's responsibility for the state roads that are in town?
State is plowing 102 Peabody Road, twenty-eight Rockingham Road, the 128-28. We are not responsible at all for any of those roads.
No, I mean in terms of the salt reduction.
Salt... oh. Salt reduction applied to all those towns that I mentioned here, from, you know, Salem, you know, Winham, Derry, us, and the state. State has to reduce as much as us, so everybody, when TMDLs were developed, and we have to... We... they allocated for us seven hundred to nineteen tons per, you know, per watershed. Each of the community had the reduction almost twenty percent, including state, so everybody has to reduce it.
And that salt pile that's off of the west side of Mammoth Road, is that the state's salt pile? That's up near the Cohas, Little Cohas Senior Development?
Yes, there's a state over there in the...
Is that an unprotected pile? Is that covered?
I think they have covered. Right now, like I said, we covered our files, because one of the things is, you know, important that runoff from the salt piles, so the EPA is going after those, too.
Okay, thank you.
And just putting the tarp and all plastic with the tires that's kind of gone with the pass.
Mike, do you have any question?
Yeah. The... you've got some... where is it? Some goals down here, reduction of six percent year one, twelve percent year two, eighteen percent for year three. That's an overall goal for the town, including any private contractors that are doing...
No, that's only... only, and that's why I would like to stress, this is only for our municipal roads and us, not anybody else. So this is... that's why this plan deals only with town roads and not with additional, you know, future development or anything else. This is to existing roads.
Okay. So, and you've got a note in here that you're going to... if a private contractor is hired by the town, there's a requirement that they'll get some training in salt reduction. So the contractors that you hire on behalf of the town will...
Will attend it. Same thing with...
Hopefully adhere to...
Because the new equipment and everything else. Through all these, you know, this was going on almost for two years, this workshop group, and then and all of the public works directors, all the municipalities, we don't use... We use as little salt as possible. We do not have in our budget. So for us, budget is controlling how much salt we are using. So we're not using any extra. However, whatever we're using is still too much for the watershed.
Yeah. What's the percentage, and you've probably told us this before, percentage of private contractors that we use to do this type of work? I mean, is it a simple for you to say the town does eighty percent of this and twenty percent's contractors? Or does it ebb and flow with the winter?
For us?
Yeah.
Oh.
That you hire for the town.
Yeah, flows with the winter. If it's a small storm, we will not call them. If it's a big storm, we'll call three guys, four guys, and that's as much what we do. So percentage, I think the majority of work, probably ninety percent we are doing, maybe ten percent is a help. But the rest is, you know, with the... But when the parking lots, when percentage, in the watershed, forty-four percent of the imports to the watershed is from the parking lots.
Right.
Where thirty-seven percent is from the... and when you look at the pie chart, you know, and this thirty-seven percent is municipal.
Right.
And state roads in this watershed is only ten percent.
Right.
So it's a huge, huge imports is from the parking.
Yeah.
And then, and how to enforce this because of liability and everything else. So no matter what we will do, if they do not reduce their salt use, there's still going to be a problem.
Okay, and the last question is, and this is probably for, you know, maybe the next council, but you're looking for Londonderry to support House Bill sixteen seventy-six, which is a certification for private salt applicators. When is that... where is that bill?
It was already went... went out of the committee, and I don't think it's going to go too far, you know.
Yeah.
Farther out.
Yeah, states not usually...
I think, you know, private companies are afraid of liabilities. This was mostly, you know, by liability.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure if that would fly, actually. Okay. All set, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, thank you.
So the public hearing was already for that.
Okay.
Did you have another question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, this is maybe for Dave. One last question. What would be our authority, should we so attempt to exercise it, to control or limit private contractors in parking lots, for example, in terms of how much salt they use, or whether or not we should wrap them into a salt reduction program as well?
Yeah, we probably could accomplish that via a town ordinance. However, any ordinance necessary to be successful has to have some sort of scientific background to it, and also some teeth, as well as a systematic process, not only for Londonderry, but across the community. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, a program like that is probably best managed by either New Hampshire DAS or the Federal EPA. We're not in a particularly good position to do that. I don't know if Janos wants to contribute.
I think it's exactly what they said, all through all these meetings, that's where we're... That we are not equipped to enforce this kind of, you know, ordinance, because that's where they were trying to go, that maybe towns will develop the ordinance. But it might go through MS4, you know, our stormwater management, because that's what could be, that the water will become impaired, and that might be the next step the EPA will go. But then, again, the testing and everything else, that they're contaminating the surface water running off from the parking lots. But right now, that bill was that they will, on voluntary basis, that they will get certification, that at least if they are certified, that they are meeting the best management practices for using the salt, and at least they are identified from some liability. If somebody will sue that company, if the company was using those practices. And that was the directions that the state was going, to try to get that bill passed. And we were all in support of it, but I don't think so far, you know, we're not for public hearing, but the vibes are not good.
Yeah, thank you.
So what would the ramifications be if we don't want to follow through this?
For us, the EPA will go after us big time if we are impairing the water and we are using salt. We're not allowed to, you know, impair, to contaminate the water anymore. They are already impaired. So I... then we'll have to fight with EPA, but...
Well, my first question is, is by reducing salt, are we going to put our roads in hazardous condition that they're not...
You see, when I was reading, I said it's very important, and if you see through all my plan, that is while maintaining according to our winter maintenance policy, we do not want to jeopardize our policy and reduce the stuff. So we're going to be, by implementing a different equipment and different methods, but we still want to achieve the same results. And that's how we're trying to do this. And this is one of the methods that I will try to try this. And I will say, okay, they are providing funds to, you know, for us to try this, we're trying.
And you kind of implied that it'll be in the, probably most likely, the southern part of town, right? Because that's where Beaver Brook runs through.
If it would be what?
Through the southern part of town.
Yes, oh, yeah. Southern part, yes. That's where the Beaver Brook, yeah.
Now, I'm trying to word this so that it doesn't come across bad, but Beaver Brook flows into the Merrimack, which flows into the Atlantic Ocean eventually, and the Atlantic Ocean is salty. So what is the hazard to the local... is it a hazard to the local ecosystem? Is there some other problem?
In meantime, the water, the salt, the chloride stays in the local groundwater, and that's in the surface water, so...
So it leaches into the surf... so it's not that it flows out to the ocean? It leaches and eventually ends up in our water.
So if you put the chloride in all this fresh water, all of a sudden, you will have, what, carp floating in it? Or I don't know what it would be in a saltwater fish right now in the upstream.
So it's more than just the fact that it's really the groundwater that works?
Groundwater, plus, you know, that falls off of the... because there are three ways that it's being judged for the criteria for the contamination. It's pretty substantial, you know. I don't...
You don't...
We can get into it, but, you know...
Please, Mr. Chairman, don't apply logic to the illogical.
And now it's going to be my...
It's aquatic life, fish consumption, drinking water supply, primary contract recreation, secondary recreation, wildlife, and then how the old surface water is being affected by chlorides and pollutants. So these are the criterias that are being evaluated.
Yeah, and Janice kind of alluded to, it sounds like this is a mandate from the EPA.
I gotta think also that if I'm a homeowner, and I have to install a very expensive and sophisticated filtering system on my well, because the state or the town has contaminated my well with salt, I would think I'd be kind of cranky about that and would look for some... someone to compensate me for that.
All right. I have one more thing. I'll make it really quick. The only thing I really am concerned with, I mean, I see the logic of some of the points of it, but to me, it's just it's going to become another unfunded mandate from the state. Anyway, the cost of the replacement pots for the spreaders...
You already know what's given, they're going to rust out. So can you give me a ballpark, or is that something you need to look at and give us an idea?
I'll have to look, but even if you look at the, I think in the breakdown in the table, I think it was a... we have some break into the equipment that saved the... Truck was one hundred and twenty, spreader unit is three thousand five hundred. You know, the air temperature is only eight hundred bucks, and the pre-wetting is a five thousand. So that... those parts are not that much additional equipment, at not that much cost. Will our truck survive through our, you know, seven-year and ten-year cycles that we have for our trucks? I hope they will, and, you know, be able to, you know, to, you know, replace with another one.
I think real-world logic tells me otherwise, but I think you know that, too. Anyway, that's all I got.
Anything else, Sean?
God, no.
What kind of action do we need to take tonight?
Looking for adoption of the plant.
Looking for an adoption?
Yes, we are. So many.
Okay, I have a motion from John to adopt.
Second.
I have a second from Sean. Any further discussion? Seeing the nulls in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, saying nay. Extentions, and the chair votes affirmative.
Thank you very much.
And now have your... Thank you, Janice, and Happy Valentine's Day. And now have your, thank you, Yanis, and happy Valentine's Day. Okay, I'm going to jump back to our public comment and allow the Londonderry Trailways folks to...
The overhead is not cooperating. However, if you go to your council share folder, there is a PowerPoint entitled February fourteen, two thousand and report out to TC.
I might have to sign in.
So you can fall along there, and if it's okay with the committee, I can, I can post this on the website tomorrow, so the public will have an opportunity to see it.
Okay.
Can I see it?
It's in the council share.
You have to go to the council share, it's not in this.
Oh, it's not in the thing? All right.
Minimize that.
So where is it? Fourteenth PowerPoint.
Top, no, that's a bunch of person.
Top right.
And just hit okay, town.
Bottom right.
Oh, with this problem.
Read only.
Okay.
Got it.
You also?
Yeah, I'll be there. Not to worry. It's Microsoft, you know.
Says the iPad guy.
All right.
All right. Sandra Legu, Two Fiddlers Ridge.
Bob Brimel, Two Fay Lane.
So just to ground us in, in what we're doing here, back on May seventeenth, as you may remember, there was a resolution that you voted unanimously on to give Londonderry Trailways authorization to investigate potential uses of the abandoned rail corridor and to report back when, when necessary to the town council on its findings and recommendations. So what we're doing today is just a report out, nothing more than that.
Just to give you guys some background on the abandoned rail corridor, it's, it was built back in the eighteen fifties, and the abandoned rail corridor runs roughly from Salem to Concord. It's about twenty-nine miles long. Most of the rail corridor is owned by the DOT because it was abandoned pretty much in the seventies, and some of it is privately owned, but like I said, most of it is abandoned. And we're looking at the recreational uses of it.
So on the slide that says Salem to Concord Bike Path at the top, and it talks about project background, the one with a little map on the far left-hand side, basically back around ninety-three widening, keeps coming up in every topic, the DOT wanted to explore, this is the New Hampshire DOT, wanted to explore bicycle and pedestrian transportation north-south along the corridor, and they actually proposed back then to put a bike path in the ninety-three median, or to the left or the right of it, but right up against ninety-three. And actually, there was a lot of public pushback to that because people didn't want another bike path like the one along eighty-nine that you don't see used very much. And the reason it doesn't get used, so people told them back at that time, was because it doesn't run near anything anybody wants to visit. You know, it doesn't go through the center of town, it doesn't bring you close to people's houses or people's businesses, and, and it's obviously not a pleasant place to do that close to the highway. So the New Hampshire DOT hired Rizzo Associates and Alta Planning to do a study, and that's known as the Rizzo Study. It's here and it's also online. We can get you an elect, a link to that if you'd like. And basically, they were asked to study it. There was a community engagement from every town on the corridor, including Londonderry. This was back in two thousand and three, and it was studied for six months. And as you can see on that slide, they looked at improving existing roads, they looked at staying along ninety-three, and they looked at the rail bed. And in the end, the short version of this whole report is that they recommended that the rail bed be the serious consideration. So the end of the study was the New Hampshire, the commissioner of the DOT at that time saying, okay, towns, it's now up to you. This was the planning. We have no money, we have nothing more. You guys go make it happen as you see fit. So that's sort of the background to that. And what, what came about from that was each of the towns sort of looking at each other, and everybody looked at Wyndham and said, you go. They wanted to be breaking new ground. You know how sometimes in Londonderry, like, we were really leaders in Southern New Hampshire, in New Hampshire on recycling, curbside recycling, and we took the lead and everybody else sort of followed us. And sometimes it's appropriate for us to sit back and let other towns take the lead and brave the new path and get bruised and beaten up, and then we can learn from their process. So we definitely took the step back and let some other towns that were very motivated to do that. So what sections have been converted from an abandoned rail corridor to a rail trail today? If you can see the map now, we're on the map that says rail corridor connections at the top.
Yeah, if you look at the big picture of the rail corridor, right now Wyndham's got about four miles of their corridor developed, which is most of it. There's funding in place to actually finish the Wyndham section and do a portion of Salem. Derry currently has about two miles done, and they've got funding in place, and will finish another mile this spring. Manchester has a few sections accomplished, and they've also got additional funding in place to complete some further sections.
So what you see on that is that section from North Salem to the far side, the, sort of the northern side of, I guess, one oh two. So from Salem up to one oh two in Derry, that's about more than seven miles, just to give you a frame of reference. That is either completed or fully, or fully funded to be completed through a host of different reasons, you know, different mechanisms. And then you see to the north of us, you can see the green line showing where, where Manchester is. So the green line and the green dotted line represents completed or funded to be completed. And then the red line represents the areas that are, nothing further has happened. So you can kind of see it's kind of closing in around us, if you get the, the gist of what's going on.
We also engaged with the community and asked for their input. We did, wanted to talk about this recreational asset, and we spoke to a lot of people at Old Homesteads this past year. We had a community engagement meeting back in January. We met with Manchester Airport. We also talked to other towns.
And let's hold that thought for just a second, too, while we catch up on that. Just to show where, hold on, where we are. Yeah, so what we wanted to just go through is, since you passed the resolution back in May, we went out on all sorts of fact-finding missions. And some of our fact-finding mission began before May, and is what caused us to come and ask for the resolution back in May, because we were being drawn to the table by other towns, basically is what was happening. So the slide that says the greater area engagement is where we're at right now. So other towns were coming to us, the Southern New Hampshire Rail Trail Alliance, which is a group of Salem, Wyndham, and Derry, were putting in a huge application to try to get one point two million dollars. And they said, hey, Londonderry, do you want to join us? And we were like, whoa, we don't have any of that authorization, that ability, we hasn't been looked at enough. You guys go ahead and, lo and behold, they got the whole shebang. That's where, how that seven million, that's how that seven miles, excuse me, is getting completed, is they got a one point two million dollar grant. So they were engaging us. Then people started doing corridor tours with other towns and with the New Hampshire DOT. So they started to bring DOT officials down to look at what was on the ground and see what was trying to be accomplished. And they were asking us to join them and asking us to partake in it, and they were riding through Londonderry, and some people would go. And so all this stuff was kind of going on around us. And they set up meetings with the airport officials, because obviously, at one point, you hit the airport, which is partially in Londonderry and partially in Manchester. So they were engaging with airport officials, and we were kind of just, we better show up and see what's being discussed. And that's how we came to the point of coming to you guys for the resolution, so that we at least had some mechanism in place, that we weren't just a bunch of town people, you know? Doing whatever we want.
Just townies.
Yeah, just exactly. And so this, and so this, and then up to more recently, the Southern New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission is hosting a whole bunch of meetings. Right up until last week, we were at one, and that's ongoing. So it really is, a lot of town governments have engaged in this conversation and have backed this on all sorts of official levels, you know, and so, like we said, we're letting other people take the lead. So as Bob alluded to, then we kind of went into, once we had the resolution in place back in May, we went into the community engagement, where we started talking to people in Londonderry about it.
Yeah, like I said, we, we, we met with people at Old Homesteads, we, we talked to other towns. We had a meeting in this room in January. You know, even at Musquash Field Day, we were talking about this with other people. We, we do have, we even took someone out from the Department of Public Works on a ride last year, just to show what the abandoned rail corridor could be used.
And we do get inquiries on our website. On a regular basis, we get people asking, we have this, you know, just like any other website, contact us, and we get asked constantly about that, and I want to help. And so through all these different mechanisms, we had thirty-some-odd people show up here on a Sunday afternoon, and it was this, it was two weeks before the Super Bowl Sunday.
Playoff games, that's a, that's a big deal.
It was a big, yeah, we were like really surprised on a Sunday afternoon. So some continued local engagement beyond citizen discussion is, Bob met with the recreation director, so I'll let you.
Yeah, I met with Art Salidas. I explained exactly what we were going to do. And then he talked to the commission members, and they, in turn, have given us a letter of support from the Recreation Commission. We've just, there's going to be some improvements right around Independence Drive because of the I white, I ninety-three widening project, you know. So we've met with DOT, we know what's going on with those guys. We've been talking to the Bureau of Trails, which is part of DRED, Department of Resource and Economic Development. And again, we took one of the town engineers out, the assistant town engineer out on a ride, just again, to, to show the certain portions of the rail trail or abandoned rail corridor, what, what it could potentially be used for, and what the current condition is right now. There's some areas that are completely overgrown, and some areas that are actually fairly presentable at this point. So we, we, we've engaged as many people as we can in this process, and we've, we've done our homework to find out as much information as possible, even, you know, how, how other towns have funded this.
And, and on that second bullet point about continued local engagement, when it comes to something like Independence Drive, what that was all about was, obviously, it's part of a much larger plan, and obviously, our town staff is intimately involved in that. And we just kind of went in at the DOT level and said, hey, by the way, when you're doing all this work, are you going to keep the corridor intact? And that was a question that hadn't been asked by anyone else, as far as we could tell, based on the surprise look on their face. And so through a lot of discussion, they are not, they are keeping the corridor open, and they're actually doing some enhancements while, while they're there. So in other words, when they're in town doing work, sometimes you can get some things done on their dime. And that's kind of what has happened there. That's like a little bit of a success. And that was a series of, of meetings we had up, up there. So then, on a, you know, a lighter note, we find that whenever we are discussing this plate, this rail corridor with somebody, it's, it's a difficult thing to discuss, because you're kind of spending a lot of time going, okay, you know where this road passes this road, and you're spending all this time trying to orient people. So we adopted an idea of name, of breaking it down into seven sections and just giving them some sort of a way to refer to them, so it speeds up discussion. That's all that's about. And so you'll see a map that is a close-up of the, of the corridor in town. And the seven segments are just pretty obvious, but it saves a lot of time when you're discussing it with people. I can tell you, it's made our own discussions amongst ourselves more fruitful. And when we had the community engagement people, people, excuse me, community engagement meeting, people immediately adapted to, oh yeah, now I know how to refer to that, that place. So there's an airport segment, there's the Little Cohas segment, if you can see how they're color-coded, they go from green to red. There's a short North Village segment, there's a segment that goes from North School to ninety-three, there's the segment that goes through the Independence Drive area, and then there's a segment between Independ, between Liberty Drive and, and the town of Derry that we refer to as the Pete Bog area, because it goes behind that wetland area that you can see from twenty-eight. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I ask a question?
Absolutely.
On this slide, Sandy, just two quick questions. I, I can't see the numbers, so I can't add it up. What's the total mileage of that route?
It is about six miles, plus or minus.
And what's the, there's green, and then there's red dots. Is that pavement and non-pavement?
No, no. In Londonderry, it's completely dirt and overgrown and dirt and, no, that is just a way that to designate the different sections. Rather than seven different colors, it's two colors alternating.
Exactly, just alternating.
So it's a non-paved trail?
Yes, it's all.
It's just reusing the, the existing?
Right, right now, it's just an abandoned corridor.
Right.
That's overgrown in some places, you know, it's a...
Without the rail still on it?
Only the segment in the Little Cohas area has rail on it.
Okay, the rest doesn't.
The rest does not.
Mm-hmm, okay. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
So, you know, by breaking down this into seven segments, it's, it's, some segments are logistically easier to fulfill and complete and enhance. Some segments will be more challenging for certain reasons, just like you said, Mike, you know, for example, in the Little Cohas segment, there are rails still in place, you know, so that would be, and that's, it's quite overgrown. But we, you know, have basically come up with a conceptual plan. It will be actually completed in about a month. At some point, we're going to have to do an engineering study and work closer with the town. But we have also seen what the other towns have done around us, and there have been quite a bit of success. You know, tonight, we're basically just reporting to you what our findings are. We're not asking for anything at this point. But one thing that the other towns do have in place is a rail trail agreement, which hopefully later on this year, we will come back to you with. It's a standard agreement. Basically, the main crux of the agreement is that it releases the town of liability, and it maintains that the DOT will have ownership of it in the event that someday the rail corridor actually is restored for rail use. You know, you know, in the future, we're also going to have to work on funding sources, as you can see on the screen. But we've already had a little bit of grants, you know, given to us just for, you know, research and development at this point. Again, you know, the conceptual plan is about ninety-nine percent finished, but at some point in the future, later on this spring, we would like to present it to you.
So in our ongoing, you know, category, we're researching ownership of each segment. Most of the ownership is straightforward, but there's always a few things that are like a little fuzzy and take a little bit more work. We really are mapping out a lot about how the other towns have succeeded. So what, as Bob alluded to, the, how you triangulate with the state on that when it's a state-owned thing. And the state has been very supportive of this, and they want it to be whatever the local towns want it to be. That's basically what they're, what they're saying. Whatever they, you know, they're not going to impose their will one way or the other, and these other towns have already broken that door wide open and kind of solved that problem. And then, we've had a lot of down-to-earth conversations with these other towns about realistic funding sources. And like Bob said, and it says in parentheses there, that we got a small, a very small twenty-five hundred dollar grant from the Granite State Wheelman just to start, you know, feeding things. So they are doing it, and it is mostly through large federal grants. Small portions are town matches. There's been large private donations in certain towns. Some towns are more fortunate than others, and we'll come back with concrete stuff for that. But...
Yes, if I may. Sandy?
Yeah.
Are you aware who the owner is for the southeastern border segment?
Yes.
You do now?
Yes.
Have you approached them?
In the design charrettes.
All right, they're, you know...
Yes, I, I, not only me, but several other people.
Yeah, just, you know, I would be more, I'd get very proactive, since they're coming with their master plan faster and faster.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that they're going to get it as fast as they want, which I seriously doubt, but, yeah, the sooner the better.
Mm-hmm.
They, they are aware of what we're doing, and they're, they've expressed an interest, you know, and willingness to work with us, but obviously, there's a lot of groundwork to be done there.
I'm sure they have a point of view.
We are sure, too.
So then there's just a series of pictures, just to sort of show you the end product, if you haven't had a chance to be out there on your own. And if you go to the slide that says the rail trail bridge over Route one eleven in Wyndham, that's actually, and if somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that is a pedestrian, you know, bike bridge over one eleven that was, I believe, part of that when one eleven got moved. So paid for by the one eleven project, that problem got solved. So it's really amazing what can happen when you get the wheel rolling in the right direction. That, to me, is just a huge success story, because that would have been considered by many people to be an unmovable obstacle. How are you safely going to get people across one eleven? How are you safely going to get people across 111? And so it's kind of amazing what they've been able to succeed. And then of course, there's the obligatory ice cream along the trail side, so. Too bad, too bad you guys can't see this, it's great.
Other quick question?
Yes.
Yes.
The, the slides that show the paved path, we just talked about how our path is not paved, is this, are you guys envisioning that our path would be paved like this and is that why you're putting these pictures in here?
Yes, I, I don't know if there was some confusion, I didn't know if you were asking-
It's confusion on my part.
Okay, and I apologize for that.
So right now it's not paved?
I thought you were asking me, I thought you were asking me what the current state is.
So the future is a paved path?
And it has to do with, you know, it has to do with the population density in the southern tier of the state. Rail trails in northern parts of the state that are less densely populated have done other things, stone dust and gravel, packed gravel. But the density in this area, you know, all the professionals involved, you know, from here to there and back have really gone this way, so that is, you know, that is the vision.
Thanks. Yeah, the, the vision, you know, we, we really didn't list it out, but you know, people biking on it, walking on it, running, you know, rollerblading, handicapped accessible, you know, it's, it's, it's for all types of recreation. I mean, this is a movement that's going on all over the country and just gaining a lot of momentum everywhere.
Non-motorized type?
Yes.
That's right, yeah, alternative transportation.
Okay.
And that's why it was part of this New Hampshire DOT study originally was as an alternative transportation. And you will absolutely see people who will use it to get to work if they happen to be fortunate enough to, to do that, you know. It's, so it has an alternative transportation and a, and a huge recreation component. So the next step, the last slide, the next step is that we will come back in the spring to officially ask for your support of the rail trail concept. And we, we plan to provide you with a lot of information before that time, so, you know, that in writing, so that you can have the time and we, and it doesn't come before you dumped on you in a public meeting for the first time, so that you can get your questions and thoughts together. And then on a, on a lesser note, not, not at all on a lesser note, but on a, you know-
Lighter?
Lighter note, I guess would be. In April, for example, just to show you the, sort of the professional level that this is being looked at, in April, the Regional Planning Commission, Southern New Hampshire and Central and a few of them, are hosting a rail trail economics benefit meeting in, in Manchester. And they've encouraged us to, when, when they get the details ironed out, to invite all of you to come and things like that.
And also, just one last thing is even though, you know, it's just a gravel pathway at this point, you know, we're, we're going to make efforts to start cleaning it up, just trash pickup is number one. I mean, there's some sections that are quite honestly a mess. And, you know, it doesn't cost money to just pick up trash.
It is, it's heavily littered, the London Dairy section is right now. And as an anecdotal story, this is actually so funny, we were, Bob and I were at a Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission meeting about a week ago and they've been meeting quite regularly and it's the first time anybody from London Dairy went. And there was probably, I don't know, fifteen people in the room and we got a small round of applause because London Dairy was here. And they said, you guys are the missing link. And they were like, do you know you're the missing link? Was sort of like, we're like, yeah, I know, we know we are. So they're just, they're just pleased to see somebody there to represent, that they can pose questions to and we could come back to you guys, just, you know, that they're happy to, to at least see that. So.
Nice presentation.
Any questions or?
Questions from Council Mike?
Yeah. You mentioned Wyndham Dairy and Manchester. Well, you mentioned the $1.2 million grant, which towns got that actual grant?
They actually worked together, Salem, Wyndham and Dairy.
Dairy, okay.
Which is just really, I couldn't even wrap my head around how they were going to pull that off as a tri-town thing, but they did.
Yep. Okay, and that was federal money, that was a grant, no match, no strings attached?
Oh no, gosh, oh, oh please.
Yeah, that would be too easy.
Oh, no, no, no.
What was the towns portion? We ought to really level set that right now.
It was very similar to, it was a similar, but not exactly the same mechanism that was built for the school bike path out in front of here, it was called Transportation Enhancement and ours was something different. It's federal gas tax money and it is distributed out to the state, to the DOT, the New Hampshire DOT, and they administer the grant out and they go through the granting process. So it is our gas tax money.
Right.
And if we don't apply for it, it just goes somewhere else, we're all paying into it. And so it's an eighty-twenty.
Okay.
So they had to come up with a twenty percent match and I believe, and we have, we happen to have somebody in the room from Wyndham, this is Mark Samsel from Wyndham, so you'll correct me if I'm wrong, that the match for that came from the Town of Dairy had, prior to them even applying for the grant, the Town of Dairy, the councilors voted to give them X amount of money that said, but they, they had a stipulation that they had to have, they had to have a fifty percent, right, and a percentage of private. So anyways, the Town of Dairy put up money, some was private.
Okay, so the, the net is that, and it's down the road thing and I'm not going to be up here, that there's, there's an expectation that there would be some contribution, financial contribution on the towns' part, should grants be pursued and et cetera.
It's sort of a one step at a time thing, I mean, I, I, what I tell people all the time when I go to these meetings and they say, what's up with you guys in London Dairy, I say, I'm, I'm sorry. We just, I don't know how you guys do it, but that's just not the environment in our town. Not now, not since I've been there for twenty years, so.
It's also the reason why we broke the path down into seven segments. There are certain segments that are easier and cheaper, it's easy to go after the low-hanging fruit. You know, again, the funding part comes later on, first is the design and engineering. But, you know, part of the funding, yes, absolutely, could be grants and we could ask for a financial contribution and that is ultimately your decision to say yes or no.
Okay.
However, in all these other towns, there is corporate sponsorship and there's private donations, there's all kinds of fundraising events, so there's-
Sandy's talked about that a lot with those projects.
There's always ways to-
You try to bring the towns' portion down to the lowest possible denominator.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And your chance of success raises up if you come to the towns for the most you can get.
That is directly inversely proportional.
That's the London Dairy I know.
Yes, right, and I think, Mark, the Town of Wyndham has put any money up?
There's been a portion that has come through conservation.
Okay. And Salem, I believe, has not, Salem put together a transportation, alternate transportation group?
Should we, could we get a little more detail on what that meant through conservation?
Sure, you want to come up?
Can you, you could sit down if you'd like, you don't have to stand at the-
Oh, I was, I was hoping there'd be public comment. If, if there is, I'll do some public comment.
Mr. Chairman, can we just, for the record, the name and-
Yeah, yeah, so you could sit down, but give us your name and have a seat and-
Thank you.
But tell us your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my name is Mark Samsel and I'm from Wyndham. And I have several hats, I'm the president of the Wyndham Rail Trail Alliance, vice president of the New Hampshire Rail Trail Coalition, as well as, as of last week, secretary treasurer of the Regional Trails Alliance out of the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. Also, I'm the chairman of the ZBA in Wyndham for four years and I'm on the Rockingham Planning Commission.
Boy, you really need to find something to do with your time.
Like a lot of you.
You get a lot of free time.
Yeah, I'm active in this. When we started our project back in 2003, one of our visions and promises was to help others along the trail, go ahead with their development, we were there to help them, we were happy to be the first in line and that, that's why I'm here, standing behind what our vision is. Two years ago, a little over two years ago, I was sitting similar to this in front of the Dairy Town Council. And we are now five months away from completing the final two miles in Dairy, which will give us by June, eight continuous miles of this trail.
I was wrong, I said seven, it's eight.
And we are, we are thrilled with that. I'm also thrilled at this point that London Dairy, Sandy and Bob are now involved. We felt, we didn't want to have people spin their wheels too early. And there's a right time, and I think you know, there's the right time to get involved in these endeavors and this is the time. We've made a lot of progress through, you know, the two towns that I'm involved in, the tri-town, that was a tremendous win for us, that 1.2, eighteen percent of $6 million that was awarded throughout the state for those TE grants. We started off that process, we weren't even on the chart, we weren't even on the chart because we had to go through the, the Southern and the Rockingham Planning Commissions to get, get that money allocated. But we came through, we came through with the largest grant of any, any award this past time around. So very pleased, again, applaud you folks for your interest and, and your continued support and future support. And we're here to help you in any way possible.
Yeah, just to follow up, you mentioned some of the funding in Wyndham came through conservation, I'm interested in what you meant by that.
Yes, that was through current, current use, current use funding, yes.
All right, so that's good to know.
Our project was five, about roughly $500,000. Eighty-five percent was private donations, the balance were grants as well as current use funding. And we've had a tremendous amount of support through the Boy Scouts, we have six Eagle Scout projects that were completed along that trail, we have two more coming up, so when you see some of the amenities along the trail, which you typically would see on a federally funded project, which would be way overpriced for us, it was completed through the Eagle Scouts.
Okay, excellent, thank you, I'll say.
If you found any value, monetary value in the salvage, sale of old rail that may be left on the, on the tracks?
Well, in our situation, the rail, the actual iron was removed in the seventies. So we didn't, there was no economic benefit there, the ties, because of the condition that they're in, the state required that they're there, they have to be left, we can't move them. So there was, there's no economic, but now we're, there is a, an organization that is working closely, I know in Methuen-
Is it Iron Works?
Iron Horse.
Iron Horse.
Iron Horse, there is an organization that is in, in the business of removing rail at no charge and they will give you some monetary value towards the development.
We can cut them up into bookends and sell them and then the money can go-
No, you know what they, you want to know what they do, it is an amazing world out there when we kind of leave our little area. They take that and they, it is, they use it for border fencing, not fencing-
Homeland Security.
It's a homeland security, I'm totally serious. And they have been doing it, it's not, it's not a first-time thing here, you know, they are actually quite successful at that.
I know in our, in our recently decommissioned North Fire Station, we have, our, a lot of our center beams are made out of railroad rails. So I just was thinking that that might be a source of revenue.
Right.
If we could not just have them removed for free, but actually turn them into some revenue that could then be turned into some, maybe some matching monies for grants.
Right.
We'd have to figure out who, maybe someone still owns the rail and then is there a scrap value to it? And how much is there really, but if there is a substantial amount, it could be a dent, a good dent in the funding.
And you notice on the Wyndham Trail, the railroad ties are all off the trail, down off to the side. It's actually kind of interesting that they're there in a way.
Yeah, can I, may I ask, have any of you been in on the Wyndham Rail Trail?
Obviously.
Yeah.
Three?
Yeah.
Okay, it's beautiful, I always hoped the minute I went on it.
Excuse me, I would like to say, you know, when, since we've opened, and I, I talk to a lot of users and engage in a lot of conversation, and the question that always comes, I, I'll say always, it's, it's that often, when will the trail extend to Salem, to Dairy, to London Dairy? That's the question that's asked and it's a good feeling when, when people ask that question. And to give them the status of, you know, what's happening, because a lot of folks aren't aware of what's happening, coming up.
Mike? Yeah, one more question, have you had any issues at all with motorized vehicles, such as off-road vehicles using the trails and having to run into the extra expense of enforcement, et cetera, on your portion of the rail trail?
Not at all.
Okay.
In 2004, we passed legislation that restricted ATV use to winter, winter time only. And then two years ago, it was recognized that trails that were funded with TE funds, that ATVs were not allowed. So for the last two, well, for the two years, the rule has been no ATVs year-round.
Okay.
From an enforcement standpoint, the first year was a little rough, I mean, there was an education leap that had to be made. But since then, it's pretty much self-policing. And even Fish and Game, when Fish and Game spoke against that bill, that legislation, their concern was the cost of enforcement, you know, our police as well, because they're also allowed to enforce ATV laws, they were concerned as well. I had discussions with Fish and Game three years after that law, when we had our base coat, they were surprised, the calls were reduced and they only had to be out once, once in the summer versus like three or four trips to constantly monitor what was going on.
Yep.
Right now, it's self-policing, it's self-policing.
Do you guys know if right now the trails are being used for motorized purposes and there would be a learning curve and an education curve here, if you got to that point?
It's a very good question, significantly less than what was going on in Wyndham. For, for whatever reason, I, Mark could tell you the history more than we probably care to cover tonight, but the Wyndham section was part of a, a section that was advertised, if you will, mapped and advertised for ATVs and motorcycles, it actually had a name, Rock, a Rockingham Recreational Trail. Trail. And so people were trailering their ATVs and motorcycles up from Massachusetts.
Was it North Hall Road?
Right.
Okay.
They were trailering, and so what we have in London Dairy is just, you know, the occasional local utilization. And one of the reasons Wyndham was so motivated to go first was because they wanted to take that back for a quieter, more family-oriented, you know, activity that was, you know, more of what the local people wanted to use. They had a lot of people coming from elsewhere, far and wide, so that was one of their.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set.
Okay, you're welcome. Tom, did you have anything else? Did you have anything else?
Thank you, all set.
All right, just, I'll, I'll close with, I've obviously written on, I think it was right after I got elected, you invited me down and I think it was me, George Herman and Steve DiSopo, someone went for a bike ride on the shorter, it wasn't completely paved at that point, it was a-
It was three miles.
Very interesting and I've actually gone back with my, my family since then. But one of the interesting things is I envisioned this corridor when complete being like the Nashua to, what's the town in Massachusetts that you could-
Eyre.
Eyre, so you, I've done that with the Scouts where I think it was a twelve-mile contiguous ride. In fact, that ice cream thing looks familiar, that might have been at the end.
That's Pepperell, yes.
So, you know, it, it might be, you know, a couple of years from now, it might be ten years from now, but it would be great if you could go from, you know, someplace down in Salem all the way up to past Manchester and do a- And the other interesting thing is, is we have the park and ride right by Route 28 and 93 there. And the, the trail goes right behind there, so there'd be like a place where people could park and then, you know, unload their bicycles and then go for a ride, so.
Right.
But anyway, I, I won't be on the council, but I hope those that will, you know, continue to support this and so.
And, and we feel like the next step, as we put in the last slide, is to come back and ask for support of the concept. And that, that allows a lot of other things to happen, just by the resolution that you did allowed us to do all this work we've done in the last year. And then the next step of actually officially, and it doesn't tie anybody into anything specific, right? And any funding decisions are independent of, it's not, you support the concept, therefore you support every little detail and are paying for the full boat, it's nothing like that. And we do have to tackle those things one at a time and it is daunting and it has stopped us from coming here for the last three years. You know, though, you know, but it's like eating an elephant, you have to take it one step at a time.
Also sounds like you have a pretty good resource with what their experience has been, so you can draw from that and use it, so.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any final questions or comments?
Oh yeah, we are in public comments, sure.
Yeah, a quick, a quick one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark, let me go to read and now-
The seven segments are from 102 Manchester?
No, the, there are, there are, there are, we just, we just named, we just arbitrarily, if you will, took the six miles that are in London Dairy and, and just broke them down into smaller pieces. And it happens to be seven.
They're all from 102 to-
No, it doesn't go, it doesn't cross 102.
It's the, it's the Dairy border all the way up to the Manchester Airport.
Okay.
So where, where it crosses Man, Dairy into London Dairy is on 28, just beyond Walmart, just, just-
Okay, all right, I, I didn't know whether-
Yeah. Where, where it crosses 102 is right in downtown Dairy, right where the Depot Steakhouse Restaurant was. That was the actual train station.
Yes.
Yes, so that's, it crosses- Yes, so that's, it crosses one oh two there.
I used it for many, many years.
Yes. The train?
Had most of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One last question. Have you intersected at all with the, with our reps on the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission?
No, actually, that is a really good question, and that came up at the meeting that we were just at with Southern New Hampshire. That was our first time at the Southern New Hampshire meeting, and that absolutely came up at the end. So that is, that is a really good suggestion as a next step. And, you know, it's a, it's a greenway, it's a recreation asset, and, you know, we have other things like that, like Laffa. You know, Bob has been really, really involved in Laffa and all that it takes to run an organization like that. So, you know, we have West Road, we have all these things that are done in these sort of public-private partnerships, or these heavy, heavy volunteer things. So this is sort of one that's of a regional asset, so.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other public comment? Okay. So we've kind of been all over the, the menu tonight, but I believe the next item is the two thousand and eleven town meeting. Is that correct, Dave?
Right. This is the annual process of according to the warrant, assigning responsibilities for making motions, seconds, and identifying resource, provide information at, at town meeting.
Okay.
If one is proceed, you have, you have the information in your packet, and first three articles, first three articles are taken care of at the Tuesday session, so there's no formal action to be taken. Next one is Article Four, the trust fund. We need three things in all these articles. Who's going to make the motion, who's going to second. Some will be, need a resource, and then we need a budget committee person to speak to it as well.
Chairman, I'll volunteer to motion now, Article Four.
I can second.
Tom and Sean and Dave will present, and Budget Committee?
Lisa.
You're going to delegate them all tonight, then? Good chair. Give yourself one.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. Well, I'd like to.
You don't need to make a motion.
I'd like to do Article Five. I'd like to make the motion for that.
Okay. Sean, Article Five?
I can second it.
Okay. John will second. And Dave and Sue will make the presentation, and?
John Kern.
John Kern. Okay. Article Six, this is the appropriation of capital reserve funds. I'll make the motion.
Mike Brown second.
Mike Brown second?
Yes.
That was Mike, correct?
Mm-hmm. Who should present?
It could be anybody.
It could be any of us. I could do it if you want.
Okay.
Okay.
Mike will present. And Budget Committee?
Dan Lakis.
Dan Lakis. So I'll, I'll motion. Mike Brown will second, and Mike Brown will present, and Dan Lakis will be the Budget Committee. Did you get the other ones, too?
Yeah.
Okay. So, all right, moving on to Article Seven, master plan funding.
I can motion it.
I'll, I'll second. I'll recommend that Andre present.
Okay. Andre?
Mm-hmm.
Andre and Budget Committee?
I shall.
All right. So you have John Farrell motion, Tom second, Andre present, and Don from the Budget Committee. Article Eight, fund special revenue accounts.
I'll motion. Second.
Mike, Sean, Dave will present. Budget Committee?
Eight, Todd Johnson.
Todd. Article Nine, this is the ratification of the CBA.
I'll motion it.
John?
Second.
Sean second. Present?
Want me to present it?
As I say, all right, I can present it.
You can do that, whatever you guys want to do.
What's that?
Whatever you folks want to do.
Want me to present it? I don't care.
Okay. You can present it. And Budget Committee?
Lisa.
Lisa. Article Ten, this is the authorization, so this is the, if, if the one fails, so there's really nothing to present.
I'll motion.
Sean motion.
Second.
John second. Is there really anything to present, Dave?
Just a brief explanation.
I could do it, Paul.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, Mike.
Essentially going to read what's below there in the paragraph.
Yeah. Budget Committee?
Rich Gill.
Who's that?
Rich Gill.
Hey, on Article Eleven, somebody grabbed me at the deliberative session and said to me that there's fifty-two units of protective clothing, that we actually have forty personnel that have protective clothing, and they each have two sets. So, so Dave, can you check with the chief and find if the fifty-two numbers are right or wrong?
Sure.
And that's just what they told me.
So Article Eleven will be motioned and seconded by the petitioners and presented by them, so we don't, the town council will not have any problem. Budget Committee?
Dan Lakis.
Dan Lakis. Okay. Article Twelve, this is the call firefighter. Once again, the petitioners will motion and second, and they will present. Budget Committee?
Mark.
Oswald. No, really? That's it?
Quick, quick question?
Yes.
Dave, refresh my memory. If Article Nine passes, will the moderator automatically skip Article Ten, or will you need to motion it down?
If you pass, you as a moderator just skip out, explain Article Ten's unnecessary, and move down to the next article.
And, and one additional thing before we adjourn, Mr. Chairman, was is, I was number five oh five coming in the door Friday night, so I missed the beginning, but interestingly, not having the chair worked out really well. Couple of real interesting things, as I have to, have to keep telling people I was the liaison to the, to the school board, and I was not there to do anything other than observe. But a lot of questions about, how did we get where we are? What's the process? What's a charter? How does this all work? The second set of questions that I got hit with and actually stayed beyond the meeting to explain was, what's Woodmont Orchards? What does that mean? How much tax revenue? When's it going to happen? And this probably went, you know, I must have went through about thirty people that night. So just one thing, nice that a lot of people were there to ask a lot of questions. Just sort of interesting that people are asking questions. Just thought I'd share that with you guys, so you, you kind of knew what I ran into.
Tom? What John just mentioned just made me think of something. Would, would it be, a question for John, would it be appropriate to invite the developers at Woodmont to put a, a little Q and A table together, maybe, maybe some easels of, some easels of the development and give them an opportunity to ask questions?
You mean a town, a town, a town meeting?
At town meeting, or at the Tuesday election, one of the two?
You know, I mean, I don't have any issue with it. I mean, I mean, Dave's in current discussions with the developers about what they're trying to figure out. I think the answers I gave were, you know, they have a lot of things they need to figure out as far as, you know, who their anchor is and everything else. So I don't think they know a lot of answers, other than conceptual answers at this point. But Dave's talking to them regularly, so.
Just, just an opportunity for them to show a lot of their, and they have a lot of conceptual drawings and so forth.
I don't think there's anything that would, there's nothing wrong with them being there, right? So can we?
As long as it's presented as informational, not a sales pitch, then you're fine.
Be careful with that, because, yeah.
Well, they, they're coming back to the planning board on March ninth. And to be honest, I have no idea what they're coming back with, because I wasn't at the last meeting, but the feedback I got from the last meeting was, is that they had a lot of homework to do. And that the feedback was, you know, you need, you really need to look at traffic, you really need to understand what we've built in the past, how we look for the future. And there appears to be a, a lot of detail that hasn't been uncovered yet. And Dave met with the developers afterward. Am I describing that accurately?
That's correct.
So I don't know, I don't know the answer to your question, Tom, I guess.
But they may not want to, but I'm just saying that the more opportunity there is to communicate, I think that that can't hurt. And maybe the lobby of the high school on town meeting would be a good venue, or maybe the, the entrance way into the gym on election day, or, or, you know, whatever. I just, I just think there's a perfect opportunity for a lot of people who are going to be walking by to, to say, gee, what's this? And, and ask someone who, who has some answers, if they're curious. Not, to Mike's, to Mike's point, I think, not to sell anything, or to try to, try to convince anyone of one thing or another, it's just information.
Yeah, I was, it's, it's not our, I could be wrong, it's not our place to say they can use it. There's something that has to be checked out. The moderator.
Right, the moderator.
The election laws, et cetera, their expectations have to be managed very carefully if they're going to be there. They can't, we can't just say, "Show up in the lobby." It's going to be a problem.
Well, the problem, I could see what, on Mike's point, I could see what Election Day is, and I'm sorry to interrupt, is the school moderator works with the developer. So I could see that.
That's.
Could be, that, that might be an issue.
Right there.
The school moderator.
No, but he's also the assistant town moderator.
I wouldn't want it.
So, I mean, I, I, I don't know, so again, I'm back to, I don't know the answer to your question, and I'll yield to Dave.
On that point alone, I wouldn't want it, as one person here.
Well, let me check with the moderators, because it is a moderator's decision, so let me check with Cindy.
Yeah, but if one of the moderators is employed by the developer, I don't want to do that.
I'm not agreeing, disagreeing with you, but what I guess I'm suggesting is that the conduct of town meeting is that the call the moderator.
I know, I know.
They're one, one thing.
So it's not our decision.
So I, I'm yielding to the town manager.
I am punting to the moderator.
I'm flagging you both for illegal procedure.
But as, as opposed to say something like, you know, the London Dairy Historical Society, you know, which is kind of selling hats or something.
I sort of get what Tom's saying, because like, if people have questions, let them ask them directly.
Read, organ.
You know, but, but, you know, I, I don't know the answer.
I, I guess it, it, there is an, there's always an advantage to whatever the venue could be, to ask directions, ask questions directly without going through a filter, whether it be John as a planning board liaison, or through Andre. I mean, it'd be, if you're a curious citizen that really hasn't been plugged into this whole process like we have, you could just say, hey, what's this all about? And tell me about it. It's, it's nice, it would be nice to get that information. If, if we're not sure what, whether the venue is, is correct, I think you're right, we ought to defer to the moderator. But if, if it's, if it's kosher with the, with the moderator, then again, information is just information.
Okay. I know we're kind of off topic here. Are you selling boots yet for Old Home Day?
Not yet.
So there's their best opportunity, I think, for what you're talking about.
That, that too, yeah.
It could be an easy sale for you.
All right. I believe we're going to wait till we're not going to do liaison reports or town manager report, and all that will be done at March seventeen.
You're called. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Discussion. You don't want to dispatch with the minutes while we're here tonight?
We could.
It would be a one-minute exercise.
Okay. Why don't we do that?
I will table my motion.
Okay.
I'll amend mine, sorry.
Okay. We have two sets of minutes. We have a two-three public budget meeting, and then we have a two-seven.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of two-three.
And two-seven.
And two-seven.
Doing both at the same time.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to accept both the February third and the February seventh meeting and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving those two sets of minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying nay. Abstentions to the chair votes, if we're, if both sets of minutes are approved.
I renew my motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I will second that, that, that motion. In the spirit of Valentine's Day.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adjourned signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying nay. Abstentions, chair votes, if we are adjourned.